Good evening, everybody. Good evening. We're going to start the review session of the council tonight. We have ordinances on second reading. 51201. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule 39. Parking zones for handicapped persons. Deleting seven handicap parking zones. 184 Fulton Street, 347 Somerset Street, 36th Laurel, 262 Townsend, Apartment B, 42B Chester Circle, 11 South Tavon Street, 59 Wright Place. We're adding six handicap parking zones. 347 Somerset Street, 36th Laurel, 262 Townsend, Apartment B, 42B Chester Circle, 11 South Tavon Street, 59 Wright Place. 5140403. An ordinance to authorize the conveyance of certain property to the New Brunswick Board of Education on Block 9, 19101, Lot 103, and Lot 211, Lot 41. 404. Bond ordinance provided for various capital improvements for the water system by and to the City of New Brunswick in the county middlesex. State and Jersey appropriating $2,260,108. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $2,152 bonds or notes to finance the costs thereof. 405. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic. Passenger drop off and pickup zone. We have no ordinances on first reading. Resolutions. Resolutions 454. Resolution 454, since I approved agenda amendments. 455. Approved payroll. 456. Authorized refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. 457. Authorized joint application, execution, and acceptance of grant for 2014 with three other New York City municipalities, New Jersey Department of Justice. For Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. JAG program. 458. Approved resolution for voluntary contribution toward municipal service in lieu of taxes agreed with Towns Lot Community Development Corporation. Location is 9 Baird Street, Lot 9, Lot 21. 459. Approved transfer of taxi license number 41 from Francesco J. Garcia Fragna LLC trading as Metro Taxi to Juana Serta. Did you say? I'm not a good Spanish guy here. LLC trading as Lutero Metro Taxi 100%. 460. Approved transfer of taxi license number 43 from Thierry Hay Smith Teteras LLC trading as Metro Taxi to Juana Serta Juice LLC trading as Metro Taxi. 461. Approved request for division of alcohol beverage control back on renewal of flattery retail consumption license from New Brunswick Labs 324 BPOL liquor license number 121433023001 from July 1st, 2014 to 2/30, 2015. 462. Approved resolution to refer to post zoning ordinance to planning board for investigation and report. 463. Approved amendment of resolution R. 031405 reason. Pay additional legal fees in the amount of $705.50 to Mitzner and Mitzner. Police Officer Brad Rudell on the matter of delusion. Services Police Officer Brad Rudell from 1420650 to 14912. 464. Approved payment to Patrick Foley Esquire for hearing officer for disciplinary action of Ronald Belafonte not to exceed $1,003898. 465. Pulled at the request of the city attorney. Approved amendment of resolution R. 021494 reason. Additional services in connection with litigation for the College Avenue pump station replacement project for tax commodity Donald for 2013-2014 miscellaneous supplemental engineering services specification number 829-13RFP not to exceed $10,000.
Mr. Council President, would you please?
Yes. We're pulling that?
Yes.
It says pull at the request. Okay, I agree. 466. Approved ABC liquor license renewal 2014-2015. 467. Set hearing date relative to continuation termination of conditions on ABC license for the Gala Cafe and Restaurant liquor license number 121433007003. The date is June 4th, 2014 for El Tropical LL trading as Tropical liquor license number 121433103005 for Meet Tiara Bar Per Serve Incorporated liquor license number 121433047005 for La Famosa Incorporated liquor license number 121433045003. Date is May 21st, 2014. That is tonight. 468. Authorized tax collector transfer of offered payments on several tax and utility accounts. 469. Approved emergency temporary appropriations for 2014. 470. Approved amendment of resolution R. 041452 reason. Change event date to September 21st, 2014. Approved request for use of city property requested by Team Sedex New Life Running Club. The location is Doolow Park and Pavilion for the Healthy Run Walk. The date is Sunday, September 21st, 2014. The time is 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. 471. Approved request for use of city property requested by Travis Malling Foundation. Location is Doolow Park and Pavilion for the 5K race for 9/11 Euros Run. The date is Sunday, September 7th, 2014, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. 472. Is held at the request of the applicant. 473. Approved request for use of city property requested by Livingston Elementary School. The location is Minook Square Park. The musical concert performance in the park by Livingston Elementary School band students. Date is Friday, June 6th, 2014, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. 474. Approved request for use of city property requested by the Greater Worship Catholic Church. The location is Boyd Park for praise and worship concert. Date, Sunday, July 26th, 2014, time, 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. 475. Approved request for use of city property requested by Word of Ministries Incorporated. Location Boyd Art Amphitheater for youth empowerment event. Date, Saturday, July 12th, 2014. Time is from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. 476. Approved request for street closing requested by Unity Square Catholic Charity Diaries of the Touching. The location is Remsen Avenue between Sedan and Tavon Streets. Celebrated opening of Unity Square Community Center. The date is Friday, June 13th, 2014. Time is 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Police extraduty. 477. Approved amendment of resolution R. 121349 for additional $2,979 for change order number one, re-adoption home improvements for Cheryl Hood, 129 Tunisian Road. Approved this change will not constitute an increase of 20% of the original contract. 478. Approved amendment of resolution R. 021441 reason emergency repairs to the city's water system, mains and ancillary structures with BMW construction covered in Jersey not to exceed 70,000. Approved this amendment will not constitute 20% of the original contract. I'm sorry, will it? 479. Approved amendment of resolution R. 031464 reason. Treated rock salt for public worse with Atlantic Salt Incorporated not to exceed 53361. Approved this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of the original change order. 480. Authorization for renewal of service plus maintenance agreement for the police department. State contract A 83921T 0109 for Micro Stab News Incorporated. Service plus maintenance agreement for IBM Network Service. Effective dates, April 4th, 2014 to March 31st, 2015. Not to exceed 9,636, not pro num. 481. Authorized purchase by police department under state contract 8A, I'm sorry, A 83909 for Motorola Studios Incorporated. Registration of one arbitrator and Motorola radio vehicle 915-2014 Chevy Tahoe not to exceed 2,300. 482. Approved amendment of resolution R. 031422 reason. Approved name change of National Vision Administrators to Benacard Services Incorporated doing business as National Vision Administrators LLC. 483. Approved amendment of resolutions. The reasons depend additional veterinary services for police canines, Jamison, and Odin Jury for missing outstanding invoices from 2010, 2011, and 2012 with Bridge Water Veterinary Hospital not to exceed 1,0041245. 484. Approved amendment of resolution R. 051444 change order number 1-8 with Aneez McCallum Incorporated for Remsen Avenue Fire Museum and Community Center. Amount is 1,0043276. Approved this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of the original contract. 485. Approved amendment of resolution R. 051484 change order 1-8 with Semir Equipment Company Incorporated for the Remsen Avenue Fire Museum and Community Center. Amount is 946. Approved this change will not constitute the original contract. 486. Authorized leasing copy machine for tax collectors' offices. 48 month lease from GE Capital Information Tech Solutions doing business as Rico USA Incorporated for one Rico model MP3352 SP digital copier system not to exceed 1,2432 per month beginning July 1st, 2014 and ending on 2/30, 2018. State contract A 82709. New Jersey cost per copy M. 0053. 487. Approved request for use of city property requested by New Brunswick Recreation Department in Johnson-Johnson Honor. Location is Memorial Stadium for 25th Annual Honor Track Meet. Date, Saturday, July 12th, 2014, 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. 488. Approved request for use of city property requested by Hyatt AIDS Foundation. Location, Warner Moore Park. National Tito AIDS AIDS Society Awareness Day. Date is Friday, June 20th, 2014. Rain date is Wednesday, June 25th, 2014, 9:00 a.m. to 14:00 p.m. 489. Resolution to provide a grant in George Street Playhouse in the City of New Brunswick for production of our town not to exceed $10,000. 490. Approved relaxation of city doors, ordinance, and road closure requested by New Brunswick Council Corporation on behalf of Josephine Gold and Sons. Road closure on Seminary Place between College Avenue and George Street from school storm store, telecommunication tunnelers, fire hydrants related structure in connection with Rutgers Island College and Rutgers Academic Center. Tuesday, May 27th, 2014, Friday, May 30th, 2014, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Date, Saturday, May 31st, 2014, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. 491. Approved request for street and park closing. New Brunswick Public Schools, Paul Robinson Community School. Street location, Comstock Street entrance to school parking lot. Park location, Feaston Park Basketball Court to area of park adjoining school for annual field day. The date is Friday, June 13th, 2014. The rain date is Monday, June 16th, 2014. Time is 8:45 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. 492. Approved award of brokerage services agreement RFQ from insurance brokerage services, dental services, to Northeastern Benefits Services. 493. Approved fiber optic cable agreement and right-of-way use agreement requested by CSC TKR LLC doing business as Cable Vision of Grand Valley. Reason installation of fiber optic cable left in New Brunswick Theological Seminary. Location, 35 Seminary Place. 494. Set hearing date relative to continuation termination of conditions on ABC license for Perle and Globe Platinum Land is LLC liquor license number 121433079008. For Kelly's Corner liquor license number 121433028006. For Gambino's Inn liquor license number 12143303004. The date is June 4th, 2014. Think that's it? Everybody enjoy that? Okay, if you'd like me to come to order now? Mark, please call it off.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Council Vice President Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garladi.
Present.
Council President Escobar is absent.
Thank you. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted into the official newspaper of the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune. Please stand for the pleasure of the speaker.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, liquid, and just as a court of law.
We all stand will have a moment of solace for our men and women serving in our armed forces overseas, for all our men and women who have lost their lives in any conflict, and for world peace. We have minutes from March 16th, I believe, 19th. I'm losing my mind. March 19th. Take a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Go on, full with favor.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we're going to move in. We're going to start with the public hearings for the liquor license. I believe the first one we're going to hear tonight is the El Tropical, trading as Tropical Cana. We're going to hear, if anybody's here from that entity, they can come up now. Does anybody hear from El Tropical?
Mr. Council President.
Yes.
If I can. This particular license is on for renewal at hearing this evening as a result of special conditions imposed by the council at time of renewal this year. I will represent to the council, I did speak with Mr. Gisaro, who represents El Tropical LLC trading as Tropical Cana. He indicated to me that he had no objection to the council reimposing these special conditions that had been in effect since the last license term. Detective DeBonis is here this evening to support his report that's been submitted to the council. If you would like, I will read the special conditions that the detective as well as the law department seek to support the purposes of reimposition by this council.
Well, thank you, Mr. Shammy. I have read some of the report that was given to us by the New Brunswick Police, and it was a very fine report, I must say. It was in great detail. You guys did a very good job on that. I do see that the El Tropical Cana had over about 100 calls for service. One thing I did notice in there, and I believe Councilman Anderson wanted to bring it up. He said he wanted to bring up a point about the Tropical Cana. And I would like to give him that one to the time right now.
Two things, just to make sure that the police officer's schedule's still from 11:00 until 2:30. And also, maybe they can even talk inside. I'm sure there are numbers on the mixer inside, they have to keep on going back and going up the lower and lower. You can make a little number on the mixer itself.
Well, if I may, just to answer that question of Councilman Anderson. With respect to live and recorded music, the current restrictions are that if you turn it off no later than 12:00 to 8:00 a.m. on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evening, and that a police extraduty officer is assigned to work from 10:00 p.m. to 2:30 a.m. on all Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evening. And those are the special conditions that have been in place. I know that there is one member of the Second Ward Crime Watch group here this evening. The gentleman in the back is Johnson, his name is. I know some other members desired to attend, but they were unavailable. It would be up to the council to decide if you want to continue the open portion, the public portion of the hearing until the next meeting as well. I believe one of your resolutions makes reference to that. But certainly Detective DeBonis could elaborate on any of the facts in the report, and certainly if Johnson addresses concerns, I believe he wants to be heard.
Would anybody like to be heard, sir? Would you like to be heard on the bar? On the restaurant?
From the Second Ward Crime Watch Committee.
Name of the address, please.
Ray Johnson, living Sanford Street.
Okay.
And since the restrictions have been put on, we've noticed mildly improvements because of noise and maintain that we'd like to keep the restrictions in place.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody from the council that want to say anything?
Just on Tropical? El Tropical.
Just on the El Tropical.
All right. Because we've been dealing, you know, we have been dealing with this back and forth for a while. And I just wanted to hear from Detective DeBonis, you know, on the, how many calls? 100?
102.
Like 102 calls, because just like we just went back and forth, we're still talking about so-called, okay, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, a restaurant, right? We're still talking about a restaurant. And we have been going back and forth, you know, saying, these are still restaurants, but are they a restaurant or are they operations, a nightclub? You know, because we go back and forth all the time where we say, you need cops out there from a certain time. And say it's like a TJ and Fridays, you know, do they need a cop outside, you know, from 10 to whatever time, or any other restaurant in the area? At some point, we got to come to a point and say, okay, they're not operating as a restaurant, you know, they are operating as a nightclub, per se. You know, that's why I want to hear from you as to, you know, saying, are the restrictions working? Do you feel like they need to be more stringent, or what's going on?
Let me correct myself to remove the three calls for service. I believe the restrictions aren't working. The establishment definitely adversely affects the quality of life of the staff. I'm with the Second Ward Crime Watch leader, and she feels that there are definitely some issues still going on in the establishment, but the police officer and the music being off at midnight definitely helps. From time to time, there are neighborhood residents who complain about hearing base in a close proximity to the establishment. What we do, the extraduty officer who is required to be there, we have him submit a memo at the end of every tour of service, and it just documents all the incidents that he handles. And majority of the incidents are quality of life issues. And to answer your question, no, I believe the conditions are helping. If you wish to visit more stringent conditions, that would be based on yourself speaking, like Mr. Shammy, of course.
Oh, go ahead, sir. Is it, you said quality of life, is it, because I remember before they had the issues, it's not just music. I know, you know, sometimes you'll have the neighbors wear, you know, cuffs, you know, things are left on the lawn, people urinating all over the lawns and stuff like that. You know what I'm saying? What, I read it, you know, it's in a read, most of the report. But just to be clear, you know what I'm saying? Because the quality of life can be somebody saying, you know, because sometimes people will say, okay, they have an ax to grind against this business, you know, they have an ax to grind, so they'll just make a phone call, then that gets loud, you know, that's a call.
Correct. That could be considered correct. When we say quality of life issues, they could be as simple as someone talking loudly, someone humping their horn, a taxi cab picking up somebody, urinating in public, of course, arguments, people walking to and from the location. And what we would like to think, the officer, by the officer being there, we believe it is a positive impact on the establishment because he may address issues at the first level or second level that may not go to the seventh or eighth level where there'll be some type of act of violence or extreme disorderly behavior. And this opinion is reinforced by the Second Ward Crime Watch, and they believe the officer being there has decreased the potential for violence in the establishment and or around the establishment.
Directly.
Correct.
So does one of, we all want the police to know that when Councilman Anderson was speaking about that the cop needs to stay there until 2:30. There was some stuff in your report where the cop was leaving early, or is it a tie?
That is correct. There has been some times where the officer leaves earlier. If the establishment, the music has to be off at midnight. The establishment is closed, all the patrons have exited, and the employees have exited the scene also, then the officer would leave instead of penalizing the establishment when no one is there and charge an extra half hour. We used a little discretion there. However, we could revisit that also.
No, that's correct. Thank you for that idea. Appreciate it. Okay, would anybody like to make a motion on this?
I would like to make a motion to continue the existing conditions on this establishment.
Second. Go on, favor? Go on, favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Mr. Council President, will a formal resolution be adopted at the next meeting? I hope that the vote is just.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next license we're going to hear is for Meet Tiara Bar Per Serve Incorporated. Does anybody hear from that establishment representing that? Come on up, sir. Speak right in the microphone.
Mr. Council President, this particular license comes up for review before the council members this evening relative to special conditions that have been in place for several years now. Detective DeBonis's report, as I'm sure you all saw from the unit, recommends the reimposition of these special conditions. Mr. Subakumar, who is the principal of the licensee, who's present here, my understanding, I spoke to him personally, but I know that Detective DeBonis has, he has no objection to the continuation of these special conditions on the licensed establishment.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to say anything, sir?
No, I'm sorry. I accept the condition.
You accept the conditions?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the council?
I'd make a motion to continue the conditions as currently in place for this establishment.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Okay, number three, is La Famosa Incorporated? Has anybody here from La Famosa? Come on up, sir. Mr. Shammy?
Yes, Mr. Council President, members of council. This particular matter, the principal, Mr. Modesto is here. We have a court certified translator, Ms. LoTera, who is going to translate for us so that we understand, and Mr. Modesto understands, the nature of the proceedings. But again, for the benefit of the council and the record, this again is a license that's had special conditions on it for several years. The police department is recommending the reimposition of these special conditions. My understanding, likewise, the licensee is agreeable to accepting the special conditions at this time of renewal.
I didn't read the report. This establishment only had 10 service calls.
Correct.
And there was not a police extraduty for this establishment.
No.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, and seems like the, I think with the restrictions, it seems to be working out pretty well, from what I read. Thank you, Mr. Shammy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really think that you guys have been doing really good. Those signs are doing wonderful jobs, according to people that I talked to. Security people that are moving these people out are doing a good job. Keep up the good work on that, and everything should be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. That would conclude our liquor license hearings. We're going to move to ordinance on second reading, 401. It's an ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicapped Persons. Deleting seven handicap parking zones, 184 Fulton, 347 Somerset, 36 Laurel, 262 Townsend, Apartment B, 42B Chester Circle, 11 South Tavon Street, 59 Wright Place, or adding six handicap parking zones. 347 Somerset Street, 36 Laurel, 262 Townsend Street, Apartment B, 42B Chester Circle, 11 South Tavon Street, 59 Wright Place. Would anybody from the public wish to comment on this ordinance? Say nothing?
Move the ordinance.
Say.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
We have ordinance 403. An ordinance to authorize the convenience or conveyance of certain property to the New Brunswick Board of Education on Block 19101, Lot 103, Lot, Lot 211, Lot 41. Anybody wish to comment on ordinance 403? Anybody wish to comment on ordinance four zero three? Anybody from the public? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Four zero four, a bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements for the water system, buying and disusing New Brunswick in the county of Millsex, state of New Jersey. Appropriate two million two hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and eight, therefore, an authorizing issuance of two million one fifty-two bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Would anybody from the public wish to comment on ordinance four zero four? Yes, sir, Mr. Cradville?
Good evening, members of council, Charles Cradville, Six Ward, New Brunswick, I wanted to ask, is anyone aware of the total debt loads that the city currently has?
I don't see Mr. Pettix here this evening, Mr. Rockland?
I don't have the percentage, but it is well below what is the maximum borrowing capacity for the city. I'd have to give that to you at the next meeting.
Okay, is it more than a hundred million, or more than ten?
More than ten million, I believe it is.
And then, is, I guess you probably don't have this figure, but I'd also like to figure for how much debt the city has cosign for, in terms of like the parking authority, is there a ballpark of that figure?
I don't have a ballpark, but I think the annual debt statement reflects gross and net debt, and that's a document that's acted on and signed by the finance officer every year, but I don't have access to that at the moment.
Okay, and please don't construe my questions to mean that I don't support this, I think we obviously have to invest our water system here, it's a good thing. Can somebody tell me that I thought we had already borrowed money to do the phase two improvements at the pumps, is this additional money on top of what's already been borrowed, or am I mistaken?
Additional money.
And, and I guess why wasn't it all done at once?
Why wasn't it?
We just, a couple of years ago, we decided to break the improvements into two phases. First phase, renovated and replaced the variable frequency drives at these rural water pump stations. The second phase is gonna replace pumps and motors, replace roofs, improve the ventilation in both buildings. It was the preferred way to take, you know, tackle the total renovations to over.
So we did the project, so you're doing the project in two phases, so it was two phases of getting the bond and getting the money together?
We need some supplemental money to add to the pot of money we've already set, set up for phase two.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Four zero five, I'm sorry.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Ordinance four zero five, an ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter Ten, vehicles in traffic, passenger drop-off and pickup zone. Would anybody from the public wish to comment on this particular ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Okay, we don't have any ordinances on first reading, we have resolutions four fifty-four through four ninety-four. With a couple of them that we kept out.
All right, seventy-two.
What number's what it?
Sixty-five and seventy-two.
Omitting sixty-five and seventy-two, anybody from the public wish to comment on any of the resolutions this evening? Yes, Mr. Cradville?
Meeting once again, Charles Cradville, number four, and then five-seven, can somebody tell me what the grant is gonna be used for, is it just police officer salaries?
This is fifty-seven.
Yeah, Edward Byrne, Justice.
Uh, JT, was that something you can answer?
Uh, this is the, the live word, it cannot be used for salary, but this is the application for live word, we have assigned location. By, as in Woodbury, for example.
Is there a specific amount that we're asking for?
Specific amount?
It's already been assigned, I stated a little more than I can out.
Thank you. Can someone explain what number nine is, and six-two, zoning ordinance, doing the C five district?
This is required by state law, if you're going to amend the zoning ordinance, you first send it to the planning board, and then take a look at it and report back their recommendation.
Right, and so why are we, why are we passing this today?
Because we're sending it to the planning board for their, for their recommendation. The, the ordinance proposes to delete taverns or bars from a section of US one.
And what section might that be?
I think all of it, Mr. Cradville, but let me check that.
Okay, and so, to be clear, the C five zone is only on Route one, that's the only zone that'll be affected?
Mr. Cradville? This is the C five A zone, it's a highway commercial zone, which Mr. Hammond said is along the Route one area, that's the only section of the city where, where it's in, and it deletes taverns as a permitted use. That's the extent of the ordinance change that's proposed.
Thank you, I have to ask you about the one that ends in six-four, number eleven, is the hearing officer for Ronald Belafonte's disciplinary hearing. Why is it that Mr. Belafonte has gotten his hearing, yet Mr. Mahoney and Mr. O'Rourke, who are both also suspended without pay, have been now Mr. O'Rourke for six months? Why has their hearings not even been scheduled, but his hearing has already been pushed through the process?
Because the city controls this one, and is not waiting on anything to happen from other law enforcement agencies.
So the city is waiting for the Attorney General's office in both of those cases?
Well, I believe what he's saying is that the, the Belafonte case is an internal thing that didn't involve outside, you know, criminal investigations, these other things are, so they have to go first, and then the city goes last, I believe, if that's how it goes.
So that is a requirement, that you must, you must wait to, to hold the hearing until after, what?
Is it a requirement?
In part it's a requirement, and in part, it's because if you have the person who's charged have to testify, you, you contravening his rights by having him testify, and then have him go testify to be used against him at any point in time.
Thank you, please.
Thank you.
Moving on, ends in seven, oh, I'm sorry, ends seven-eight, number twenty-five. Emergency repairs to the city's water system mains, can somebody tell me where this is, and why, why there was an emergency, whatever it was?
Council Vice President, we go to bid every year for a contract for emergency repairs to our water system distribution mains. We had one of the worst winners of, of record, and subsequently, we had one of the worst main break seasons of, of record. We went through our contracted amount early on, and I've asked to amend the contract to provide emergency coverage through the rest of the year.
And then the, the last one would be the Our Town grant, what is that for? Number eighty-nine, number thirty-six, ends in eight-nine?
Uh, who would like to speak on that? I think you have something to do with the state here, I mean, the, the gala thing that they're having at New Brunswick, uh, here.
Um, Mr. Cradville knows, I know he was posting on, on his blog today, the George Street Playhouse is putting on the production of Our Town, including a production called Our Town Now, which is based about New Brunswick, using local New Brunswick actors. This is part of the city's effort to support the arts in town, and we are providing a, a grant to them to support this production.
Thank you. Have we ever done this before, Councilman Anderson, would you ask you that?
Um, we have provided art supports grants for both Crossroads Theater, the Cultural Center, and George Street Playhouse in, in previous years, not structured exactly like this, but, uh, it's for similar art support.
Thank you.
Okay, and I did have the pleasure of attending the, the show this weekend, Our Town Now, it was excellent, and everyone deserves their due credit for their involvement. It was great, it was, it was really well done, and I, I was a fan of it. I just want to ask though, so that means that the money's already been spent, right? This is ten thousand dollars, it's already been spent, or is this a new effort to, to bring this play back again?
No, this is going towards the, the current effort, the money hasn't been spent, because we haven't, council hasn't approved it yet, but we're going to support the, the costs of the production of Our Town Now.
So I guess reimbursement, maybe?
It's up to their internal account.
How did hell everybody spend their money? They were given to a dirty friend, however they see fit.
Okay, well, I thought, I thought it was a great play, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Anybody else wish to comment on the resolutions? Only the resolutions, please. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Anthony Larven, at the George Street, I wanted to ask you about that, the Route one rezoning, and I can't, I can't find it, the number.
Item number nine. Item number nine.
Item number nine.
Oh, we just spoke about that.
Yes. So would that include On the Water and Bullhands on Route one? Those are both on Route one.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, because approximately where the Sears property is up to the river, most, most of both sides of the highway there, where you typically see the highway oriented restaurants in that area.
Through, 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 this would not affect them, because they're restaurants, opposed to taverns?
No, restaurants are a permitted use in the area, this is just affecting establishments that are just essentially bars or for taverns, it does not affect restaurants.
Are there currently any bars on, on Route one?
No.
Uh, and then my other question is, sorry, to not have this highlighted. It's one of having to do with the fire museum, the Unity Square Fire Museum, I was wondering if that is still going to be completed by the summer? I, I, I remember that that was, that was planned.
If you see the, the Catholic Charities having a grand opening, Mr. Rockland, I believe you would speak on that?
Unity Square offices have been open for about three weeks now, at the ground floor level. It is the second floor level, that'll be the fire museum, and the rough fitting out of that space is complete, but the finer museum work will be at a later date.
Great, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions? Seeing none?
Motion.
Second, and I'm to standing on floor nine.
So no, ma'am.
Thank you. Go on, Paul.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Okay, now we're gonna move to the public portion of the unity, public discussion. If anybody has anything to address the council, now's the time. We are on your five-minute rule, when you get up and address the council. And that's only when you're speaking, we stop the clock when, when there's dialogue, to let anybody know. So anybody who'd like to come up and address the council, do so at this time. Name and address, please.
Keith Jones, fifty-sixth Avenue, I just want to read a couple of things real quick, now to be under four minutes.
Yeah.
Coordinates, okay, cool, coordinates of Thanksgiving turkeys distributed annually to over twenty different city organizations. Assistant distributing each year over six hundred toys to children in the city during Christmas holiday season. Works within the New Brunswick school system, on fire safety, public education, career day, Red Cross America, recreation. Works with Robert Wood Johnson and the Civic League of New Brunswick on their annual field day with cities, youth at Pontry Park. Passion in working with the city's youth and the seniors of New Brunswick. Works with the Hupton Center on programming with the youth, works with YSS Summer Programming on their annual field day. Twenty-eight years of service, of excellent service in the city of New Brunswick. He's also a father, he's also a friend of mine, and none of this was mentioned in the witch hunt that took place, and that is still taking place, prior to or after the unfortunate accident that took place with Fire Director Rawls. And what you have here today is family and friends, you have faith-based leaders, you have community leaders, you have people who see and know this man for the stand-up man that he is, the character that he possesses, and, and we're here to support and stand with Director Rawls. And let the public know, let the media know, let the talk aheads know, that we won't stand and allow for this man's character to be assassinated for what was clearly an unfortunate accident. I think everybody in this room are still, prayers are with the, the kids, and, and the family of the children for speedy recovery, it's an unfortunate situation. I think that the biggest concern should have been, where was the crossing guard? That was my, you know, concern, not whether this man was drinking, not whether this man was texting, not whether this man was speeding. And before any of those facts came out, we wanted justice for this guy, we wanted him locked up, we wanted his job, and this is, this is ridiculous. And we allowed his salary was put in an article that had nothing to do with the accident whatsoever. You know, so we're here today, and it was national news, I mean, this is all national news, this, and we allowed this to happen. So what you have here is a room that all, most of these people got here at five o'clock and five-thirty, and they sat here till it was almost quarter after seven now, just as quiet as they want to be, looking good, smelling good, and we're here to support, and that's, that's, we will, I want this to continue, I want this to, for everybody to continue coming to these council meetings, I don't want this just to be a one-time thing. I want to become, stand for our guy, and, and then we go back to letting just anybody rip them up, rip their character up. Robert Rawls is, his profession is to run into burning houses and save others, no matter what color you are, you know?
Exactly.
And, and, and we took that for granted, and we took him and tried to just assassinate this man's character. So we, what you have here today is a bunch of people that just say, no, we're not gonna let that happen, and that goes for any publication, local or national, and that goes for any talk ahead that is here to assassinate this man's character, and that's it.
Took out Pittman in two ninety-one Seaman Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey. First want to start by saying, Thursday, how was the gala? Like, I didn't, I was, I definitely wanted to come, I didn't get. The mayor, you guys had a, I still think.
Wasn't bad.
It was bad? Next time, offer me a ticket, I'll come. Pay for it? Also, um, I want to address, you know, you guys, I guess you gave funding to this, uh, play, Our Town, and, um, I went to see it, it was Saturday, I went in there. I actually ended up walking out, because I thought, to me, it was a political ruse, you know, um, it's, it's showing, it's advertising a smoke screen on New Brunswick that don't exist. How it's, it's just a beautiful place, and it's wonderful, but it didn't show the other side of New Brunswick, and I thought that was a political ruse. And was ultimately what made me walk, take my family leave and walk out of the play, and mention, mind you, my brother-in-law was in the play. My brother-in-law was actually a member in the play, but what made me leave, because you guys have given history of New Brunswick, and saying this, and all types of facts of New Brunswick, you didn't even mention that New Brunswick had a black mayor, Al Cooper. He was nowhere in the play.
Look, let me stop you right there, we can produce the play.
Oh, I'm just saying in general, okay, let's get that.
I just wanted to be a director.
Okay, I, I mean, so if you were to produce it, because I looked on the wall, Al Cooper's not even on the wall.
Well, he should.
Most people wouldn't even know that we had a black man, Aldris Cooper.
I played baseball with his son, I know that, I'd say we can put the play together.
Okay, well, next, well, it's gonna find, and it's gonna come back, it's gonna come back to the crossroads, and it's gonna come back, then put a, put the, put the one and only first, the elec, the first elected official in the history of New Brunswick, and the only mayor in the history of New Brunswick, shouldn't you have shown some respect and put that man's name in the play? We talked about all sorts of everything.
Her mother was the woman, first woman mayor in New Brunswick, was she in the play? Was her mother in the play?
It doesn't matter, I'm not, I'm not, you know, my focus is Al Cooper, because I'm not a white woman, I'm a black man.
I got you.
Okay. And also, I'm gonna address, I think Rodney Belafonte is returning, right, to City of New Brunswick, you know what I'm saying?
Mr. Rockland?
He's returning to work on June fifth.
Okay, and how did we come to that conclusion? Okay. And how did we come to that conclusion?
That was the decision of the hearing officer and the city and the union submitted to the hearing officer. And actually, the union asked for a hearing, did not agree with our penalty that we asked for, which was termination. And the hearing officer issued a thirty-day suspension of Mr. Belfond.
Okay. And what was the basis of him returning?
As I said, the hearing officer issued only a ninety-day suspension. It does not uphold our request for termination.
So Mr. Pippen, prove me, but you can't have the one-on-one conversation here. So the union, they had a hearing, and the hearing was, came out for him to have his, to get his job back.
Okay.
So, I mean, will he be returned to that department?
That's to be determined.
That's to be determined. So now, how does the rules work now?
Because obviously, he did nothing wrong. So if, if, if.
Nobody said he didn't do nothing wrong. There's people that do wrong and get punished, and they get, and they go back to work.
So that was just, so that's the punishment for his actions is standard thirty-day suspension with anyone?
That, 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 was that it?
No, no. He did something terribly wrong. He uttered a word that no one in this room.
What word was it, though? I'm not gonna say it. Why not?
He doesn't have to say it.
So I'll say it.
No, you don't have to say it.
Yeah, I'm gonna say it.
Why do you wanna say it?
Because I wanna say, because it's a word. I didn't invent the word.
Okay, but why do you need to say it?
I didn't create the word.
Tell me why you need to say it.
Because that, that word has power to it, and that man used that word. But that man is coming back to this department.
You don't understand.
He's gonna continue to get a serious, wait, let me speak.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping to talk right now. No, this is my meeting, I do a meeting.
Yeah, y'all got these pens, you wanna get this word.
Listen. I'm left, left. I didn't hear what you said.
No, that's okay.
Okay. They wanted to terminate him. The city recommended to terminate him. They lost in the hearing. Why are you making the city to be the bad guy here? They tried to terminate him. They wanted him to be fired. That's what the administrator just said. Okay? Bad or good about unions, the union representative, they have to go through a hearing. That's the process, collective bargaining, it's in your career. That's how they, that's how you negotiate. That's how people get fired, hired, when you're part of a public employee union. Whether you like it or not. It's like the play. You don't like the play, you don't like these rules either, but that's what it is.
All right, but then, I, me personally, regardless of what the city, the union's decision is, my character couldn't allow me to work with a person under that situation.
Well, there might be other people like that in the city, that's all.
Are you one of those people?
Absolutely.
Are you comfortable, you comfortable working with a person?
No, I said, no, I'm with you.
So when he returns, will you resign in your position?
Why would I resign? He's not gonna work with me. What would I resign for?
Why would you resign?
Yeah, what would I resign for? What did I do? Why would I resign?
Because the city is employing.
I would know Rodney Belfond, David Belfond.
Because the city is employing, the city is gonna give a paycheck.
So I should resign?
Hold on, hold on. The city is gonna give a paycheck.
You got another minute and ten seconds on your side.
I'll let somebody speak, okay. All right, the reason why I'm focused on this, on this situation, because this is a young, this is an educated woman right here. She went to law school.
I know that.
She has degrees.
Absolutely.
This man had no reason to say, I hate that fucking nigger.
Okay, you happy you said that?
No, because, no.
I enjoy you.
But now he's returning, now he's returning, and she has to still work with this man? She has to still work with this man?
I don't know.
You know what, you know what that word did to our people?
That was to be determined.
And he's, oh, wait, wait, he's under, he's under raw supervision. There was no pens for her. Nobody, not one person, he said, I hate that fucking nigger for no reason at all. That woman did nothing wrong to him.
Listen to me, you're gonna curse.
Not one person.
You can't curse in this room anymore, you're gonna have to leave the room. There's no person allowed.
I have to leave the room, but you're gonna employ him for his salary?
I'm not gonna employ him. I'm not gonna resign.
He's gonna get a silly check, you're gonna recommend me?
I'm recommending you. I'm recommending you.
You're gonna recommend me?
Yes.
I hate that fucking nigger.
Okay, yeah, you can leave. You're done talking now. You're done.
I'm staying.
You stay here, you're not talking no more.
I'm staying.
You're swam out the way.
You find a loophole, you keep it employed.
I don't wanna have to have your rules from the room.
I don't care if I don't agree with her or not. That's my sister. I'm gonna stand up for her. I don't care what, that's right. And listen, I never hated her.
You're done talking.
I never hated her. I don't agree with what she do, but if somebody disrespect her, I'm gonna stand up for her.
Thank you.
It doesn't matter what covered it.
Your time is up.
It doesn't matter what covered it.
Thank you.
And Rawls was aware, he called that, and he stepped back and approved them.
Thank you.
And that one pen was brought here for her.
Anybody else wish to talk to the public in the public hearing today? Would anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, sir. Once again, I think that, first of all, it is great to see so many people come out.
Yeah, they come out very good.
I wanna be here for, to see what the city council does and to speak up and stand up for what they believe in. And I wanna say that this is now two meetings in a row, that not everyone can fit in the room. We need to move this meeting to a bigger room. There's one across the street at the pre-holder room. Is there anybody against that? Can we do that?
Yes, I'm against that.
Why are you against that?
Because this isn't more, this isn't usual normal. What do you mean, everybody can't fit the room? We can fit eighty people in this room.
But there's some time.
I'm saying there's folks who would, listen, it is awkward in this room, even when there's not a large crowd. And people might not know, this room used to go deeper until the business administrator's office was built. The city's grown over time, these meetings have grown over time, and we need to move them to a place where every member of the public.
We'll take another consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to ask if the council has anything to say about the crime statistics? The armed robberies are up one hundred and seventy-two percent in the first three months of 2014. What can you tell us about that? Why is that happening? What's being done about it?
I really don't know much about it. I haven't seen a report about it. No one has given me a report. I'll, I'll let the editor, Captain Miller, has to say about that?
I don't have anything to say about this. I haven't had a chance to.
Are they, you haven't seen them? Do you know if they're right or wrong, or the statistics? Are they, are they true?
Where did this crap get them from?
Where'd you get them from?
State police.
State police?
They're right, that's what we said, that's what our records to be, to be realistic.
So is anything being done?
Are the police taking any measures to, to stop, you know, crack down on burglars?
We work every day. Well, I know it's Captain Miller's job to deal with press inquiries, and I, I'm a resident of Lewis Street. On April eighteenth, I noticed that there was some police activity in my neighborhood. Door had been kicked down, undercover vehicles coming in and out all day at the seventy-two Lewis Street home. And I've asked now three times, just what was going on. I wanna know. It's my neighborhood. And I have not gotten answers. So maybe someone has that answer tonight?
Have you sent emails to, to find out?
I CC'd you this morning on my most recent one, but I've asked three times now since April eighteenth. It's more than a month. Again, a lot of questions, weekly basis, not on a daily basis. After Brian Hart died in my apartment, I can't get, answer every one of his questions. As far as what happened on Lewis Street, as he indicated, with undercover, undercover officers there, I wouldn't tell them what was going on there anyway. I'm not gonna comment on what happened on Lewis. You can't tell me a month later what was going on on my flock, on my streets? No. Okay, well, I think we need to do better than that. I've asked many times about whether or not Barre development, or is it Bure, I'm not sure, whether or not they've met all the stipulations in the agreements they have with the city to get these long-term tax exemptions. I asked that investigation be conducted. Mr. Patterson agreed to do that, and I've asked for that response for some time now. What is the response?
Yes, you have. Mr. Patterson, what do we have?
Mr. Credible asked one time whether the tax abatement agreement required there to be affordable housing in that project, and no, it does not. I wouldn't know on the other requirements of that. That goes more to the finance department. But he'd asked me specifically about the affordable housing, and that's not part of what the financial agreement for the abatement is.
So let's be clear, the planning director doesn't know if all the stipulations of the agreement have been met.
He wasn't asked that. He was asked one specific thing, and he answered.
You're out of order.
Yes, and I apologize to the council.
Well, I hope that I can get that answer. I know I asked a lot of questions. I asked them over and over again.
You asked that question, I know you asked that question, and I believe when you come back, Mr. Patterson should have some answers.
Thank you very much.
What are you shaking your head no for, Glenn?
I'm the planning director, I'm not the finance director.
Okay.
Sure, someone has the answer.
So strictly about the financing, you wanna know?
I'm asking whether or not they've met the stipulations in the agreement, so whatever that entails. They've agreed to do certain things in order to get this sweet deal from the city. Wanna make sure they're doing what they promised.
Somebody here have an answer, please? I mean, not here, somebody next meeting. We'll get those answers from Mr. Credible.
Thank you very much. I have one last question about, I've asked it a couple times, I think, Engine fifteen? Is it up and running? I'm sure somebody here can answer what happened to Engine fifteen.
Engine fifteen, would know about that. Anybody from the fire department here?
No, if it's what you're looking.
Who would speak on Engine fifteen?
Chris, can you speak to the, I guess there was a, fifteen appeared to be disabled one day on George Street a couple weeks ago?
Yes, that, that engine actually blew a transmission line. It's been repaired, it's back in service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Anybody else like to address the council this evening? Yes, sir.
Address something.
Name and address, please.
I live at one seventy-five Vincent Avenue, New Brunswick. My name is Xavier Franco, and I've been calling to verify what's been going on with the fire chief. As I mentioned last meeting, that I was trying to get ahold of a police director. I can never get ahold of the police director and talking to him about getting more officers and getting more salaries for these officers and getting more crossing guards and paying more salary to the crossing guards. I've been trying to get ahold of him, and they never give me a verification for what's going on with the fire chief or what is, you know, what we should do.
So I don't understand your question. You wanna, you wanna know about putting more crossing guards on?
Yes.
Okay.
And more police officers, because I've been seeing on French Street, are they bullying the Hispanic people? And all these Hispanic fighting in front of the park on French Street. I think it was Tuesday or Monday afternoon, I was walking towards my mother-in-law's house on French Street. And this been going on, a lot of fighting, a lot of bullying, drunk people on the street. And I've never seen officers patrolling, this was, you know, they should be patrolling New Brunswick. And I haven't seen officers around the area. And I'd like to venture, what can you do in this case?
Mr. Lockman?
Mr. Egan, if I could just answer a couple of his questions. The police budget for this year assumes the hiring of twenty new officers. Two of which are, twenty.
Twenty?
Two of which, two of which are already on the payroll, and eighteen of which will go through a summer police academy.
Exactly.
Okay. You knew that?
Huh?
You knew that?
I didn't know that until you just said it, because we need, we need more officers and crossing guards.
I think the police department would agree with you on that.
And I've been telling, I've been trying to get ahold of the police director so I can speak to him. Because I called the secretary earlier, and I told her I wanted to speak to him and make a meeting. And I want to speak to the mayor to tell him what's going on in this town, because this town is ridiculous. They should get this, this town up, like North Brunswick, Franklin Township. They have better, better than New Brunswick. And it looks to me that this town is not doing anything. And it looks really ridiculous.
I'll try and get to the crossing guard question as well, but I don't mind saying this. This town is not perfect, but there's a million good things going on in this town.
Why other towns?
Whether you choose to recognize or not, is your business. We are looking at the compensation schedule for school crossing guards, and we will have recommendations to the mayor for September first, when there is a new school season.
Because this, this new school coming up, I would like to know if they're gonna do like a traffic light, because it's still speeding, and I don't see any officers around Livingston Avenue. And we need more cops patrolling that area and Winston Avenue and detectives. Because there's a lot of drug dealing going on, and it hasn't stopped. And I'm seeing it lately outside, because I walk with my kids, take them to, you know, I'm four weeks vacation right now. And I've been seeing a lot of drug dealing, drinking on the street, and I don't see the officers lately.
Well, I can assure you that Livingston Avenue has been a top priority ever since the accident. I've seen a lot of cops out there myself, I drive down here every day. And there's still more we can do, and we're definitely working on a better solution. And everybody agrees about the crossing guards, everybody agrees about the police, and we're working to get, to straighten that out. I can assure you that.
Can you at least put a traffic light there, or at least?
It's not, it's not up to us. There has to be a study done, it's a county-owned road. And I know people look at us like, say, yeah, you're just passing the buck, but we have no jurisdiction over that road as far as the scoring lights.
Can the county do something about it?
Sure, yeah. Go to a county board of freestanders meeting, they're the ones that can decide whether the traffic light goes here or not.
At the end of this meeting, can you give me their phone numbers? I can just at least contact them?
Sure, maybe the, the, it's right across the street where they meet, and I believe you might have the schedule, or somebody might have. You'd have to give me some information on that.
I think the next meeting, can we at least get, because the last time, there was a lot of people in this building. There was more than a hundred people, and they did not fit, they were outside waiting to come in to this council meeting. I think we should adjust this meeting at the next building, because the next building is more.
We'll take that into consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, council.
I just wanna say, throughout this whole situation, as council members, I know that we continue to pray for the children and everybody, not just the children, but everybody. It was many families affected by that, including the director and everybody else. On that note, I just wanna say that whenever something like this happens, there's always two types of situations that arise. Last time we were in here, it was news cameras all over from every single major network. And some people looked at that, at the point, saying, you know what, how can I exploit this situation for my political gain? And it would've been easy for us to speak up at that time, you know, hey, I can get on the national media right now. But unfortunately, some people just look at this as a show, and after the cameras are gone, we still gotta live here. And I disagree wholeheartedly, even I don't speak directly to anybody. New Brunswick is still a great place to live. You know, sometimes we say, okay, this city is so down and stuff like that. Well, if it's that much down, you have to do something to improve your community. Plain and simple. If I know there's drug dealers in my community, I'm gonna call the cops. If I know something happens in my community, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get on the phone right away and do something about it. We can't sit there and clean up communities. We can't go out there and sweep up communities. If you see trash in your community, organize something to make your community better. Whenever we see something like this happens, we always see. You know, we talked about firemen before. We said, he runs into fucking burning buildings. Well, guess what? Sometimes we have to act like firemen also. Whenever something like this happens, you got two choices. You can be a fireman, you can be an arsonist. A fireman will put out a fire and try to make sure nothing like that ever happens again. But unfortunately, we have too many arsonists in this community, who once one fire is put out, they'll go see another situation, try to rise up and stroke the fires again, instead of trying to make sure it doesn't happen again. We had a lot of racial stuff that went on, you know, people said, well, if this was a person, if this guy was not black. I have never, ever, ever heard somebody say that a black man is not gonna be arrested for something. That is the first time it hits me that I have heard a black man. Did I finish? I got my time. That's the first time it hits me I've ever heard something like that. So, I mean, we experienced it. This was an unfortunate situation. This could've happened to me, this could've happened to anybody. But we still gotta live here in this community. Everybody's gotta pull together. We wanna see everybody out. Otherwise, other voices, and unfortunately, we're one of the only communities, we, we transport or we import our so-called activists. We have people who come in from other towns. We're talking about North Brunswick and this. We got people from other towns who come in and stir up stuff in our towns, then they move out, and then you don't see them anymore. And then what's left? We still have to live here together. We still have to be the ones that live in this town together. And regardless of whatever anybody else says, my vision of New Brunswick is that we're still moving forward. We're still a great city, and we still got a lot of work to do. That's all I got to say.
Go ahead, sir.
I think what he was saying was, um, sorry. I was thinking that the North Brunswick Township is different than New Brunswick, because they got more, they got more, what you call it? They got more crossing guards. They got more crossing guards, and Franklin Township has more crossing guards, and I see them every morning when I go to work, that they has, they have more crossing guards than-
Did you, so you tell me you know that by sitting there, or you know that by sitting by them?
No, when I drive by, when I-
Oh, when you drive by, you see it?
I see it, because I'm Franklin Boulevard, right there, as soon as I make a left at the traffic light, there's two crossing guards, and then on the other blocks, I see there's more crossing guards than in New Brunswick. I think New Brunswick should come more further. Thank you.
I've, uh, two quick things. One, the Our Town play was based off of interviews, so that was, that was not a-
Go for it, please.
That was not a production that was put together by any, uh, one person or director. It was a series of fifty interviews, uh, I was one of them, and those interviews molded the play. So, if, you know, the interview didn't speak on the, uh, you know, the, the African-American mayor, mayor that we had, or female mayor that we had, uh, that was left out. So, what that play gave, uh, the city was actual interviews put into a script, and the play actually did touch on a lot of things. There was some, there was some rough parts in that play that was kinda rough for me, and at the same time, there were some, some brilliant parts of the play that, and I'm, I'm grateful and thankful for George Street Playhouse and Our Town being put together, and I- The goal is to be able to play and, uh, present it to schools and houses of worship as well, so, 'cause there was a lot of history in that, in that play that, that I learned. You know, I, I never knew about the, the pool on Livingston Avenue, where Houltown used to be, and how that was, you know, segregated and then covered up, you know, so, you know, there was a lot of little, you know, good points in that play. Some good, some bad, but for what it worth, it was a, it was a great play. Uh, and to touch on the crossing guard situation, uh, yes, it's, it's a situation that I think that is gonna take a collective effort. Uh, we had over three hundred people at the last council meeting. Uh, we have a, a, a nice group of people here tonight. There's been discussions since the accident. Uh, and I have not yet heard anybody say, "Hey," you know, we, we want, they, I've been hearing, "We want a crossing guard on every block," and we're demanding the police do this, or the cross, the city hire crossing guards. Yet, we have block captains, we have committee men, we have committee women. If we are so focused and so dedicated to our kids, let's, let's get our blocks together. Let's get our blocks together, let's put a schedule together. Hey, I got two hours on Wednesday. I got one hour on Monday. I can cross the kids on Monday morning, you can cross the kids on Tuesday, until we figure out the situation that we need to figure out with hiring, uh, these new crossing guards or more police. 'Cause then we hire more police than it's the situation of, there's too many police officers in New Brunswick, and they're harassing everybody. We need to hire enough crossing guards. The last argument was, uh, ten dollars is not enough. You're not paying the crossing guards enough, so why would I wanna be a crossing guard? I'll take ten dollars an hour. But, I think the easiest way of what would show that we are a community, that we genuinely care about our kids' safety, is put these block captains together. Put these blocks together, let's have these discussions. How many, how much time could you dedicate a week to cross these kids, to help build this community, to, to set examples for our children on, on the cross the street properly, and not leave it up to the city, or leave it up to a crossing guard or a police officer? That's all.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make any public comment to the council this evening before we adjourn? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Glenn, I live in the sixth ward. I just wanna say I, I appreciate the inspirational aspect of what was said, but it should be known and recognized that there are many people that give a lot of time, effort, and money to helping this city and working on improving it. That's all.
Yeah, absolutely, and listen, Council Fleming said a lot of good things, but we all have work to do every day, and when we leave here, you know, we, we're just not council people when we come into the room, we council people every day here, we try to do the best, just like everybody that works for the city tries to do their best. And, uh, we always strive to do that, and we're gonna stumble and fall along the way, but we're gonna pick ourselves up, and we're gonna do the right thing, because like Council Fleming said, we all lived here our whole lives, and we wanna stay here, and we enjoy living in New Brunswick. So, after that beautiful kumbaya moment, Mr. Hallington is very sorry he had that out first. I'm speaking out in the air, I'm just speaking out, but I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Yes, absolutely. Hold on, hold on.
And you didn't, you didn't open it up again after-
I wasn't gonna open up again. I just said, I just said, did anybody wanna speak again?
No, you didn't do it after this gentleman spoke with the cleanup.
Well, sir, I am so sorry. Would you like to speak again?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, sir. Name and address, please.
Andrew Larabean, I'm from George Street.
Okay, go ahead.
I, uh, I just had some questions about the, uh, the, um, road diet that's being implemented on Livingston Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I see that it's, uh, a bike lane, a travel lane, a, a middle lane, another travel lane, and a bike lane, and the parking lanes, uh, are still there. It leaves, it, it continues to leave at least sixty feet of pavement that people have to go across from curb to curb, and I, I feel that, that's something that needs to be reexamined with, uh, curb bump outs, or some other measure to shorten the distance that, that, that people with small children and elderly people need to walk while they're on the pavement. If, if, if I'm on the road, I'm on the road, that's where cars, cars belong. If I'm on the sidewalk, that's where people belong. So, even, even the parked car area, if I step out onto that pavement, that's, that's fair game for where cars should be. So, my suggestion and, and my hope is that, uh, it gets reexamined, and those, those, especially at the, at the crosswalks, you know, near schools and, and things of that nature, that the curbs get bumped out so that I can walk on the sidewalk to after where the, uh, where the cars are parked, so I can get to that edge of the road, and I don't have to go out on the pavement to look both ways, um, and, 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 and get a feel, a full field of view without being blocked by, uh, parked cars. And, uh, it's something that works in, in traffic planning. I'm, I'm sure Mr. Patterson has, has, uh, has seen studies that, that include this type of, uh, design. Uh, also, the, the stretch from Sanford Street all the way to Nassau Avenue has no traffic lights, there is, um, zero room for, for cars to stop. All it is, is a huge, wide-open expansive pavement, and, uh, I, I understand that the road is being made thinner, but, um, I can use an example in New Brunswick, George Street by Bugle Park. That road is plenty thin, and people go fifty miles an hour down that road. I mean, there, there needs to be something that slows cars down, whether it's a traffic light, which is the most commonly-used thing to slow cars down, or a traffic circle at, at an intersection, something needs to be done about that. Um, and, and, you know, I, I would hope that the city takes the, takes these, these things into consideration, um, going forward.
Hi, you, boss, this is George.
Anybody else wish to talk? Yes, sir.
Rory McCarter, Howard Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey. I'm a resident of New Brunswick, the school student who's I have, taxpayer, and I've been trying to ascertain funding to fix my house. I did all, all the paperwork, I met all the credentials, I see you building up new stuff, and for some reason, I've been getting a runaround, so who's in charge of Development Directions LLC Rawway? That's possibly helping people fix their homes up in New Brunswick, you're a resident, and you're in good standing with the city and all that.
You know, you wanna do fire hydrants and all this, and all this, you know, just trying to, you know-
We've dealt with the gentleman, uh, for, for a while. Uh, my recollection, I don't have all the specific facts, is that the cost for rehabilitating his house was substantially beyond what, uh, our program provides. That he would have to provide some additional financing, then he may qualify for it, but the house he has needs extensive repairs. Our program has funding limits of thirty thousand dollars per unit, and that does not cover the cost.
Now, I have documents that I had ascertained for five reputable businesses that was way under what they're saying. I've been, I've been calling, I submitted the new ones, I even gave them to the, uh, Assistant Mayor, he's emailed, and I'm saying, well, these figures is way under what they offered, so I'm like saying, "Oh, hey," so I was like, "Well, have it, whoever is supposed to come back again, here's my, here's an estimate from-"
Okay, when's the last time this happened?
I've been contacting them even the last week. I have all the phone works, I'm calling, leaving messages, nobody returned my call. I go out there to the police, I came to the bathroom, and they told me to keep waiting.
Okay, so is there a way we can re-meet with him, discuss it?
We've had lots of, uh, discussions, uh, with him. The contractor she's referring to, we've told him multiple times that if he wants to get them qualified for the program, to get involved with, so they are a qualified program contractor, he can have them do that, to call Development Directions so they can get them qualified, and to my knowledge, they have not done that to become qualified. The estimates, uh, that, uh, had been done for his house, uh, have been substantially beyond what our program, uh-
Can I see the copy of the estimates that they have? I've been asking for them.
He's seen them.
And the, the estimates are done by qualified people? That, that, does that work in the program?
The estimates are done by the, uh, program manager that the, the city has, Development Directions that he's, uh, he's referred to, and, um, yeah, he can, he can see them. I believe he has seen them.
I've been, I've been trying to ascertain the documents, give me a copy of your estimates. They, they never gave them to me, they hadn't come out there, nobody's around, so I've been like, "Kink."
Can, can we, can we schedule some type of meeting, where you can give him the documents and, and, and give him all the information, and then please tell, tell him why you did it?
Sure.
That would be, that would be great, if you can give that.
Alright, I'll be with you when they transfer the permission stuff.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Would anybody else? Yes, I know Councilwoman Garland, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, I wanted to, um, express out loud Mike's appointment with the, the findings, uh, regarding this employee. Um, I think the city pursued the appropriate strategy requesting a termination, and it's unfortunate that that was not supported in the findings, and I wanted to say that out loud. We have a very good and qualified administrative team that helps us do our job. Uh, I think we see that at every meeting, and, uh, I wanted to express my continued support, and I, and, and I hope that we can find a way to ameliorate the situation so that no one feels like they need to resign in order to be able to, um, conduct the business in New Brunswick, because that would be disappointing.
Mr. Cretville, thank you. Yes.
I'd also like to, uh, remember, uh, this coming weekend is Memorial Day. I'm sure there are a lot of veterans and people in the audience. Uh, we wanna thank them for their service, and to remember those that have gone before, and try to remember what the days are all about.
Here, here. So, everybody have a great Memorial Day weekend, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, I guess.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Marla.